Yeah, let's go ahead, just in case.
Welcome to Board Meeting for Tuesday, July 1st. In attendance, we have our Superintendent Duncan, Board Member General, Board Member Lizzy Payne, Vice President Samantha Johnson, District Business Administrator Richard Reese, and I'm Vice President, Cami Anderson. So, welcome to those that are in person here and then also to those that are joining us via Zoom. And we will begin with our pledge of allegiance by word by President Biden.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for our donations, we are going to go right into our patron statements. And Doug, do you have those?
I sure do.
While we're getting ready, I know we have some patron statements that are going to be right tonight, but we also appreciate anybody who sent us emails over the last couple of weeks. We do read them and we appreciate the comments and feedback that we get from the board.
Okay. So, we have eight patron statements. Hopefully, I've got my reading voice back. This first one is from Lisa Lafferty, teacher and NDA board member. I am a teacher and NDA board member and speak on behalf of myself, staff, and others who have voiced these concerns to me. I would like clear clarification of a hybrid option for parents. Obviously, as a teacher, I stand with the board that we always want the best for our students. I always feel that the best learning will happen in the classroom. I would ask for parameters regarding structure and consistency for those parents who choose this option. I feel it is important that excessive absences while using this option be addressed as well. I believe there are parents who will embrace this option to get the best learning experience for their children, but that without their guidance, guidelines that explain that being in the classroom will afford intervention opportunities and additional academic and social opportunities. They may not have the understanding to use this option to their child's best benefit. I understand the need for social distancing and trust that the district and board to make those considerations and changes as well as in the hybrid plan. As a teacher and NDA member, I'm also concerned with teacher emotional health and the stress of not knowing who will be attending class consistently as an issue that should be addressed with finalizing plans with a hybrid option. Thank you for your time and consideration of our concerns. Next one is Kristen Reber. Good evening. I am a parent of two children, each is five and seven, attending Millau Elementary. I would appreciate my voice heard on COVID mitigation practices as well as clarification on blended learning mitigation. I believe it is important that mask wearing is enforced as strongly encouraged versus strongly encouraged as this is one of the successful mitigation practices out of officials in the region. I would ask that HVAC systems meet the HVAC protocol set forth by the CDC for office environments to prevent airborne exposure. If a child has a family member test positive for COVID, will the test, the positive test be automatically reported to the school by the health department? How will schools know? And if they are notified, will the child be required to quarantine or obtain a negative test before returning to school? If a child in school tests positive, I understand parents, close contacts will be notified. Will quarantine and/or negative test or a negative testing required before returning to school? In the two circumstances above, how will protocols be enforced? What if any enforcement is in place for social distancing, mask wearing before the, before and after school, during drop-off and pickup periods? What exactly would facilitate school closure in how many cases? And then their blended learning, how many days per week in class versus at home? Are parents able to select which days are in class or are they predetermined? Will the online instruction be a recording of the teacher that occurred in the classroom? Do blended learners join the full-time students the days they are in class or do those learners work together separately? Before registering my children, these questions must be answered. I would also appreciate any additional information about logistics somehow, blended learning will work that I have not addressed. I do want to thank you for your time and consideration in regards to keeping your children and communities healthy during this pandemic. I know it's not easy. My family loves our teachers and community and believe that they help. That help is the first step to a common recovery. Okay, next one is Stephanie Myers, parent on Hillcrest in Murray, high students. Board members, I'm very concerned with opening schools too soon. In-person education would not be held with the amount of daily cases of coronavirus still rising. It's ironic that this meeting is being held electronically to decide whether or not or what not to let our students whole school in person. How is school any safer than this meeting? Taken from my own notes, pursuant to Utah Code 52-4-207 and Utah State Directive to avoid any social event or gathering of more than 50 people, this meeting of the Board of Education of Murray School District will be conducted electronically. Our children are not clients in fight against Governor Herbert Hoover. Parents know it is dangerous to send children back to school. Why is the school district so anxious to open schools now? If it's not clear, I'm adamantly against opening schools in the fall. This is from Cynthia Reese. Let's see. Dear Murray School District Board, I write you for several reasons today. First, I would like to thank you for requiring that face masks be worn in our schools even before it was mandated by the governor. Requiring the face mask to be worn in our schools is an important safety precaution for students and staff. I'm also writing to respect that you request that you consider altering the Murray School District's return to school plan to encourage and improve the possibility of social distancing. Our current plan does not address the need for social distancing beyond saying that people should do it whenever possible. I respectfully request that you formalize the hybrid option into split class A and B model to help create smaller class sizes, allowing for better opportunities for social distancing in the classroom. I would also ask that you officially include a social component for the online-only students to keep them connected to their peers and from the school in which they are officially registered. This could be accomplished with a weekly Zoom meeting, with a meeting or a member of the staff in their school along with other online working students from the school. If it is possible, it would be preferable if a way could be found to use the recorded lessons made by the hybrid teacher from the student registration at the school as part of their online course curriculum. Thank you for your time and consideration for my request that the school district change their return to school plan to formalize the hybrid option into an A/B model to reduce class size and under the possibilities of social distancing. Also, thank you for considering changing the online-only model to consider the emotional and mental health of students by including a structure to allow social interaction with their peers and from their registered school on a daily basis. This one is from Angela Fairbanks. I am a concerned parent of a second grader at Millau. From my research, the highest risks are indoors with minimal ventilation in groupings of people for an extended time. All of these factors will be enforced in schools. Even the best efforts to mitigate risk, even the best efforts to mitigate risk, exposure is emugrated for our teachers who the latest science indicates are the highest risk for being, for both contracting it and having symptoms followed by caregivers who will contract it from kids as well as older children in school. Since we don't know the long-term effects of this virus, it's hard to make these judgments, these judgment calls, especially with our children. Mortality is not the only metric with contracting this. Nowhere in the world are schools been opened to the height of infection rates like we currently have. So, we are quite literally about to become a case study with the choices we make. That said, since statistically or statically, statically symptoms seem to be more mild for children as a parent, I want to express my concern for our teachers who are, who will be risking their lives to educate our kids. While many of them have acknowledged risks before in things like school shootings, this year, every day, they will be constantly at risk, not by some external force, but by the sweet faces they are expected to teach. While I want this school to be safe and beneficial for my family, with deepest respect, I want to provide teachers a protected environment to which are to do the important work they do, they do, and help them feel supported. As much as I usually advocate for term votes, this is a situation where I think priority should definitely fall to health experts who are following the latest science and developments. I support recommendations put forth by the Center for Disease Control of American Academy of Pediatrics. This includes reduced class sizes, hybrid or virtual learning, required PPE and increased sanitation, sanitationation, improved HVAC systems, practices that allow for reduced exposure and contacting, contact tracing, and protocol for shutdown. While I appreciate the options we have in our districts, schools touch While I appreciate the options we have in our districts, the schools touch nearly every place in our community. So these are not just individual decisions, but choices that affect the safety of us all. I understand that not everyone will wipe solutions, but ultimately, our biggest priority should be delivering education to our kids, will maintain our health and safety as new year for as many people as possible. Thank you for your consideration. Next one is from Lindsay Hale. Let's see. I don't understand why, in the Surgeon General, the CDC and a number of studies involving kids and COVID are saying reopening schools is a bad idea. We are fourteen ahead in opening. What is the rush? Why not do distance learning for six weeks, see what happens in the rest of the country and other schools open and reevaluate? Why are we experimenting on our kids? Next one is teacher from Riverview Rochelle Gowan. Murray secondary teachers have learned so much about the effective distance learning during fourth term and have continued to learn throughout the summer. The absolute safest option for students, teachers and Murray community is to make distance learning the main priority and still allow for weekly meeting times with the teachers to ensure that all students stay engaged and focused in their learning. In this way, their teachers can act as mentors as well as educators to help each student get the support that they need, also mitigating the risk of spreading COVID-19. And this one, last one is from, let's see, Rolina Patterson, who is a student at Murray High School. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts. Here's my statement. My name is Rolina Patterson. I am a junior at Murray High School. After hearing from one of the board members about the possibility of masks to not be strongly enforced in the 2020, 21 school year, I feel I need to speak up. I feel that in this difficult and abnormal time, it's important for the students' voices to be heard, especially since decisions made at this meeting could put our lives, our families' lives and those of the faculty and staff at risk. In the two, in the 2020, 21 year, masks should be treated as a mandatory part of dress code enforced just like, or like, like it puts lives at risk because it does. Some worries I have heard from students will struggle, that students will struggle and be unable to wear masks the whole school day. Currently, the color guard and marching band at our school wear masks for our full practice time from seven thirty to ten thirty. Despite being out in the warm ninety degree weather and having near constant physical exercise, we have adapted to wearing masks. The school day is a bit longer, however, the students will be sitting in air-conditioned rooms for most of the day, so the masks will be less of a hindrance. Children and teenagers are fully capable of wearing masks through the entire school day. Wearing masks is extremely important to keeping the staff and students as well as their families safe. A study by BYU explained that wearing a mask decreases the chance of transfer on COVID-19 by at least ninety percent. The point could be made that people who are afraid of the risk of catching COVID-19 could learn online this year. So in the short time I had to write this, I asked some students who were planning to take, on taking classes fully in person, why they chose to go to school despite the risk. Out of fifteen people who said that they would be taking classes fully in person, only one person said it, it was because they weren't worried about the high risk. All the other fourteen people said that it was because they had struggled learning online. These students aren't going to school because they aren't worried about the math or the risk, but because they feel that they have to to succeed. These students who struggle learning through video and without a teacher, without teacher guidance also deserve to feel safe and minimizing the risk to their health and families. It's important that we try to give every student the best opportunity to succeed and strive without the risk of getting extremely sick. By requiring masks in all classrooms, creating masks that has addressed code violation, educating students and staff about the importance of wearing masks in classrooms, the effects of COVID-19 will be minimized. Masks need to be strongly enforced to keep staff, students and their families safe. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Doug. And thank you to all of us who provided patrons comments both for the board meeting and also online. We appreciate us hearing from them. So we will go to our superintendent for our reopening plan.
Okay, thank you. Good evening to our board members. The reopening plan that is before you tonight has been worked and reworked many times in an effort to balance the health and safety of our students and our staff while providing the best learning options for our students. Our plan provides flexibility and choice for our families while at the same time being mindful of the workload on our teachers. This plan, if approved, will continue to be fluid as we work with our government leaders, the Utah State Office of Education and the Salt Lake County Health Department. Our students, families and employees as well as our Murray community are all experiencing uncertainty around the changes that the COVID pandemic has brought into our lives. We understand emotions are running high because of this uncertainty. We acknowledge the concern and nervousness that many have surrounding the reopening of schools. We also acknowledge the concern and nervousness many have surrounding not reopening schools. We appreciate the comments that have been shared with us and can assure you that we have read and considered each one. We appreciate those that have taken time to reach out to us to thank us for the hundreds of hours we have put into working on this plan, knowing there is no one right plan. We appreciate our school administrators and our Murray Education Association who has spent hours working with us through our plan. We appreciate and thank you as a school board for working together with us on this plan. Since our last board meeting, we have had significant updates to really six areas of our plan. And to begin with this evening, we feel like it's important that we brief the board or discuss with the board what those, uh, those updates are in order for you to have a more fully understanding and also this addresses many of the questions that we have received from patrons. So those six areas that we will be covering are the wearing of face coverings, the learning options, training for our educators, the responsibility of parents, uh, what will happen when a positive case is identified and then the decision model for our school scenario should we need to look at a different scenario? So I will begin this evening by addressing the wearing of face coverings. I'll present the information and then if the board has any discussion or questions, I'm happy to answer them. So on our plan, this is addressed on page ten of our plan. And if it goes off page ten and then continues on page eleven. It is under the section face coverings, which is about halfway down. So, um, I apologize. Let me just get this so that everybody can see it. So the governor of the state of Utah had issued a public health order and that public health order states that each individual, including an employee, student or visitor on school property or on a school bus shall wear a face covering. Murray City School District will follow and implement this public health order. The current public health order is in effect through December thirty first of 2020. And if you or any patrons watching online would like to see that public health order, there are links to that in our plan. The definition of a face covering is, is in that public health order. It means a cloth mask that covers the nose and mouth without openings that can be seen through, a face shield or a similar covering that covers the nose and mouth. And in talking with the health department, that would include buffs and gators. Face coverings should be changed or longer each day. In Murray City School District, we will not be used having band-aids or scarves. Those will not be recognized as face coverings because they do not comply with our dress code. Face coverings are part of our required dress code for all students now and students will need to have their own face covering every day. All of the requirements of our school board policy PS four twenty-six, our student dress code will apply to face coverings. So that covers, includes things like logos or slogans or images that may be on a face covering, do need to comply with our dress code, which is very specifically stated out in PS four twenty-six. Many individuals are concerned about what happens if our students choose not to comply with this order. We are going to hope that in the spirit of what the governor has stated over and over, we will always ask and expect that our students will comply. If masks come off unintentionally or malfunction, school personnel will help correct that. If there is a willful defiance of the face covering order, it will be considered a disciplinary issue. Students or visitors who choose not to comply with the face covering order will not be allowed on our campuses. Again, we are complying with the public health order and for those who choose not to comply for, for whatever reason that may be, we do have other options for them for learning. So we've tried to build that in. Uh, we do have one cloth face covering for every student in the district. We have smaller cloth face coverings for our kindergarteners through second graders and then we have another set for our third through twelfth graders. So any student, and those will be available at the school, a cloth face mask will be available for every single student. There are some exceptions to wearing face coverings that are in the public health order. The first one is an individual while maintaining a distance, distance of at least six feet from any other individual when outdoors. So if physical distancing of six feet can be maintained when outdoors, that is an exception to the face coverings. An individual who is eating or drinking while indoors and maintains a physical distance of at least six feet from any other individual. Our principals are working very hard to set up the cafeteria schedules so that we can have this there of our installing signage, seating arrangements and those types of things. A child who is younger than three years of age or who is three years of age or older, the parent guarding or individual responsible for training for that child cannot place the face covering safely on the child's face. So that, that really is for our preschool and our Spartan Station. Um, an individual with a medical condition, mental health condition or disability that prevents wearing a face covering, including an individual with a medical condition for whom wearing a face covering could cause harm or dangerously obstruct breathing or who is unconscious, incapacitated or otherwise unable to remove a face covering without assistance are exempt. However, those individuals will be required to provide a written medical directive that they are unable to wear a face covering from a physician to the school administrator. So we recognize there may be some medical, and these are not our students who have individualized education plans. These are just individuals who, if they have a medical directive from a doctor that they are unable to wear a face covering, they will need to provide that to their school administrator. Um, individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing, who are communicating with other individuals where they need to see the mouth, it's essential to communication, we are strongly encouraging the use of a face shield. Uh, we also have Plexiglas barriers that we are working with for some of our students. Those students, in most cases, do have an IDP and Public Purge, our director of at-risk services is working through that. So parents or families who have children that fall into that category, we would ask that you contact Public Purge. Students who have an individualized education plan and that, that would necessitate an exemption from them wearing a face covering should also contact Public Purge, the director of at-risk services. And those exemptions will be made through the IDP process. And then an individual who is receiving or providing a service involving the nose and the face for which temporary removal of the face covering, cover, covering is necessary to perform the service. So a couple of things, when we, we talked about that, um, one, that is in, in the event we need to necessitate anyone for any reason, that would be an exemption and of course that makes sense. Also for some of our speech services, our students who have speech and will need to have that, so we will be providing some additional PPE to those individuals who will be working with those students, uh, so that that can take place. In the order, it does address elementary recess. So elementary students participating in outdoor recess do not need to wear a face covering outside during recess as long as students are going to recess by cohorts, which our principals are organizing. Physical distancing is promoted and hand hygiene before and after recess is practiced. And then finally, students participating in school-sponsored activities or physical education classes is addressed in the public health order as well. It does say that they are encouraged to wear a face covering but are exempt if they cannot reasonably participate while wearing a face covering. An example of that might be our football team who may not be able to wear a face covering while wearing a helmet. Although UHSSA, UHSAA just came out with some guidance on that as well. For our PE classes, we are going to ask that whenever possible, they wear a face covering. Our PE classes are also going to be meeting outside though for as long as they can, which and that socially distanced, which will help. Um, so each individual participating in the school-sponsored activity or physical education class must complete a symptom assessment, verbally confirm that they are COVID-19 free before participating in the class. And so we will work with our PE teachers on that because that is going to be something that the kids will need to verbally say, I do not have any of these symptoms on this list. Just as a reminder, as we discussed last time, we do have two cloth face masks for all of our staff members. We do have a face shield for all of our staff members. We do have a cloth mask for each of our students. So that is an update in our last board meeting that the governor had just barely announced his public health order. We had not seen the order. This language comes directly from the order and I just wanted to once again state that it is our intent as part of this plan in Murray City School District to follow and implement the face covering public health order. So I welcome any questions or comments? Okay, okay, thank you. Next up, I'm going to invite Assistant Superintendent Bushmella. He will be starting a conversation with the board regarding the learning options. We've had a lot of questions surrounding this and we appreciate those questions. So Assistant Superintendent Bushmella will begin that discussion and then he will enlist the help of the teaching and mentoring team directors as he continues through that. So I'll turn the time over to him.
Superintendent, just for a point of clarification, it's important to speak really loud and into the mic, you two bland is having a hard time hearing because of the masks. So that you, they said that you were doing better, but just, okay, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. We apologize. We will talk louder into the mic. Thank you. It is a little more challenging with our mask, mask card.
Thank you, Superintendent Covington. And I just want to thank as well our community, our teachers, our staff members, our employees, our students for all of their comments and for, uh, the, the taking this so serious in consideration of how they want to reapproach this reopening with care with the Murray City School District. So thank you. I just, if I may start by just recapping from last board meeting, kind of how we landed on the options that we would like to propose to the board, the learning options that we'd like to report, propose for you to, for your consideration. As I mentioned, last board meeting, uh, we did some surveys and one of the surveys was a parent survey. And in question number three in our parent survey, the question read, please indicate which educational delivery option you would most support for your students. you would most support for your students. And we had three choices there. One was in-person. One was a hybrid model of instruction that allows students to participate in both in-person and remote online learning. And the third was an all-learning conducted remotely through online learning. And for the in-person learning, we had, of the respondents, of the just over 1,000 respondents, we had 46, just barely over 46%, that said that they would prefer an in-person learning option. We had 42, just barely over 42% of those 1,000, just over 1,000 respondents, that said that they would be interested in a hybrid model of instruction that allows students to participate in both in-person and remote online learning. And then we had about 11.5% roughly that said that all learning conducted remotely through online learning would be their preference. So as we looked at those options, or as we looked at that data, we looked at what options we could provide in terms of learning for our students that might fulfill those three areas. In addition, we had a survey that went out to teachers, and one of the themes that kept reoccurring in that survey was please be considerate of teachers and the workload that they have with regard to both in-class and online learning. And so as we asked ourselves, what would these models look like? We tried to frame them around the data that we had from these particular surveys. As we did that, we realized that the in-class, in-person model obviously is what we do, and what we've done for many, many years in schools. And that option is a realistic option that we can provide following the health and care mandates that we've been asked to follow by the government. We also were able to offer a fully online learning option. And we have done that at the secondary level for several years as well now, provided that option. Where we hadn't provided that option so much was in the elementary schools until March 12th, when we all had to go online, and we quickly learned what that was about. So. What we hadn't experimented with, or hadn't had a lot of experience in, was this idea of what if you could combine the two, the in-person and the online? Is that possible? Is that realistic to do? The only real experience that we've had with that in the past is what do you do with a student when they're absent? Whether it's a short period of time or an extended period of time, how do we help them get their education? And we really have a home and hospital facilitator that helps with that, and they take assignments to the home, and the assignments are taken back, and that's really how we did that. And we thought, well, with technology that we have now, could we be able to do something similar to that, but rather than have somebody go back and forth with this homework and assignments, could we do that electronically? And even more importantly, could we do that and reduce the amount of time that it takes to shuffle those lessons back and forth? Could we get as close to real time as possible with something like this? Would that be a possibility? And so we asked ourselves, well, what would that take to do this hybrid? Again, I think most people understand from the comments we're getting. They understand clearly in-person, and I think we're becoming more familiar with the online option. But it's this hybrid model that we're, that's surrounded with a lot of questions. So our goal was to try to create a hybrid model that allows students, for whatever reason, if they're in class or if they're out of class, to make sure that they still get their education. Was home and hospital ideal? No way. It was not ideal. Are any one of these particular models ideal, given the pandemic situation? They're not perfect by any means. But what we do have is we have the opportunity, we believe, through technology, to offer this hybrid learning as an option when a student is not able to attend in-person and still be able to deliver the education in a way that might be similar or in line with what we're doing in the class option or model. So having said that, we determined that if a teacher is teaching all day in an in-person environment, what would it take to get that? The only difference on an online learning from an in-person learning is that the student is in a different location. And so that changes some of the things that we need to make that delivery. So as long as the student's outside of the classroom, whether it's hybrid or online learning, what would we be able to do so that we could get the in-person learning as similar to what we do in class into the home? And we determined that with camera, we've heard of swill cameras, with these huddle cameras that we're looking at, if we could have teachers videotape key concepts, direct instruction, and upload on a learning management system like Canvas for secondary or Google Classroom for elementary, that realistically, we can deliver, for the most part, a good portion of that lesson into the home without asking too much more of our teachers. Maybe a little upload time, and maybe a little professional development, to make sure they understand how to run the camera and how to manage Google Classroom and Canvas. And then the student could access that information once uploaded and participate in an online forum with the lesson and be able to do the assignments and return those back, upload those back through their learning management system. The idea, the concept behind this is not to redevelop or invent lessons that are in addition or above and beyond for online. It's to try to use what we're doing in class, capture that in class, and share that with students that are outside of the classroom. So that's the premise behind really these three models, the in-person, the hybrid, and the online learning. The hybrid allows apparent choice in when a student is absent or present. That's a different mindset than what we've had in education before. We have said, you must be present, and you're actually penalized if you're absent. In this case, we're asking, if you can't be present, can we deliver the lesson to you in your home setting so we can get you back in person as quickly as we can? Or if you're still uncomfortable with that being in school, let's see if we can work with you to gradually get you back to that place. Now ideally, the hybrid model is for extended absences or for students that just don't feel, and families that just don't feel secure in the current environment, being at school every day. That's a different mindset, again, for us as educators. As was read tonight by one of our teachers, we'd like to know who's coming each day. We want to know that. In the current environment, that may not always be possible. But we can know who's coming online or who's coming in-person every day if we work with and partner with our parents. And if we help create a method so that they can let us know where that student is that day, whether they're in the home or online, they can still access their education. So that's really the goal behind these three offerings that we have. For secondary, there's actually a parallel, fourth option, and you can see that where we allow our secondary students to do some independent online learning. That's more often than not by individual class, and it's something that they want to take online in addition to what their current schedule is. And we've done that with accredited providers for many years now and want to continue to offer that as an option in addition to the other options that we have that we're recommending or providing for you this evening. So having said that, I hope that that kind of helps to start the conversation on the types of offerings, learning options that we have. I'm going to turn the time over now first to Missy Hamilton, who is the director of elementary education in Murray District, to talk specifically about the elementary programs. And after she finishes, we'll ask Robin Williams to come up and talk specifically about secondary programs that we have. And we'll go to that point, and then we'll entertain the questions that you may have.
Thanks, Scott. So thank you for giving me an opportunity. I'm a very visual learner, and so I have pictures and graphics. So as Assistant Superintendent talked about, we do have learning options. And so if Robin will come up, we can probably tag team a little more efficiently, I would imagine. So I want to talk a minute about the online learning options. And this portion of the presentation is going to be an opportunity for parents who are out there still wondering, what does it mean? What does hybrid really mean? So to do that, let's first talk about what in-class learning looks like and sounds like so that I can provide information so that I can make a decision that best suits my student and my family needs. So this is what in-class learning typically looks like. So on a three-tier level, and I don't want to get too jargon-y, but it's important for you to understand this, okay? Plus, it's really cool, triangle. In tier one, there is direct instruction. This is where the teacher pulls out all the stops, gets students engaged, having students respond to questions, interactive, really engaging, asking their questions, direct instruction, okay? Students are interacting, they're providing assignments. Tier two happens in the school day as well. This is when students are broken up into smaller groups, okay? This is when targeted intensive intervention happens or enrichment, okay? And these are smaller groups, and those groups are built around student learning data that we're gathering, whether that's difficult data, whatever it might be, okay? And then tier three, also happens during the school day. These are for students, again, maybe 5% of the students who didn't get it in tier one, need more practice than they did in tier two, and even smaller groups, typically one-on-one, one-on-two groups. And I tell you this because in an in-class environment, that's what students get on a regular basis in all of their content areas, as well as classroom discussions and things like that. So that's what an in-class offering looks like. In a hybrid, as Superintendent said, all students are hybrid students, right? We want to set up a mechanism for those students who are sick, absent, quarantined, to still keep pace, right? But then we also have families that are very reticent to send their students to school, and we want to honor that. We want to offer flexibility to that. So here's, oh, me? I said it. Sorry, too wide. So here's what happens. During that awesome tier one instruction, our teachers are going to be video recording themselves, okay? We're going to be able to capture that directed instruction. We are not going to be able to capture that tier two. Why? Because that is personalized and targeted. It's going to be really tricky to personalize and target that recording for kids if they're home or not home or not knowing what days of the week they're going to be home or not at home. So we will upload the direct tier one instruction, all the stops piece, okay? So personalized targeted instruction can't be uploaded. We'll do that for math, science, social studies, English and language arts, those assignments, and that targeted tier one instruction will be uploaded. Here's the kicker and what families need to know and understand. Because that instruction is going to happen and it's going to be recorded, it's not like yet, okay? Do we have the ability to? Yes. Let's do this well first, okay? In that case, we're not going to upload those assignments until 4:30. That's our timeframe. Teachers are going to have some extra built-in time to be able to upload those assignments, okay? So. Okay, so let me just stop there, and I'm going to skip to this. So in a schedule where a family decides to hybrid schedule on a Tuesday or Thursday, or they say, no, I'm going to keep my kids home Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that's cool. Know this, okay? If we don't upload until 4:30 on Monday night and you're planning to be at school on Tuesday, you're going to have to engage in learning from 4:30 until in the evening so that you'll stay on pace for Tuesday. Otherwise, when you come to school on Tuesday, you're going to not be prepared for the learning that happens that day because tier one instruction happens on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, right? And we're going to upload that instruction at 4:30 on Monday night. Same thing with any one of those structures, right? So in a situation like this, if a family still wanted to exercise a hybrid option, if you did a Monday, Tuesday, you would have, if back-to-back days together allowed families to keep students home and minimize that risk, but still have opportunity and time built in to complete the day before's assignment. Monday, Tuesday would require doing Monday's assignment on Tuesday, right? But you still have to do Tuesday's assignment before Wednesday, right? So you've got to probably do Monday's assignment on Tuesday, and then Tuesday's assignment Tuesday evening. Or Thursday, Friday, do Thursday's assignment on Friday, and Friday's assignment on Saturday. And then you're not having to double your evenings. But that might work for some families because of work schedules and things like that. So we had a couple of families that said, can you give us a schedule of what that might look like? So these were a couple of opportunities. So any of these would work, any number of these would work, just knowing that 4:30 that afternoon, you'll get the assignments for that day. In order to be prepared for the next day, you have from 4:30 until the next morning, okay? So I'm going to cruise down here, and I'll let Robin talk about the secondary stuff and the hybrid. It's very similar. There's just a couple of caveats.
So I want to remind everybody, too, that as we've looked at this, we took a look at the structures that we have already been supporting. We looked at the structures that occurred this last spring, and we really wanted to glean what was ideal and what was less than ideal. And we absolutely know that there were lessons, there was learning, there were things the kids struggled with. And to be able to reach back out and ask those questions or to be able to come in and get that coaching or that help was problematic when we were completely online. And we had many of our subjects where parents didn't feel that they were the right person to answer their child's questions. Calculus, chemistry, physics, many courses that we experienced that they needed that additional support. So one of the things that we really talked about is that when we offer the flexibility of in-person, we are saying to families, and we are saying to students that our teachers are going to still be teaching five days a week, available five days a week. We know that that flexibility will look different for different families. Some families will want to have their students at school all five days for the entire day. We also know that there are people who are very fearful about sending their students back to school, and they may have the circumstances where they can have their students stay home more often, maybe it's two days a week or three days a week. But they also may have those struggles with a chemistry class, with a calculus class, where they are very interested in still having that support from their teachers. So again, our schedule is very similar in description to elementary in that we are matching pace with those classroom teachers. We will be offering, again, that direct instruction and those assignments uploaded via Canvas each day so that students can stay at pace with the course that that may be. Now, I don't have the visual that Missy has, but I do think it's important to know that our junior highs are on the seventh period day every day. Our high school is on an A/B schedule. And with that, they will need to take a look at that as parents to talk about what the student has and what days make the most sense. I love that Missy had it Monday, Tuesday. That may make a lot of sense to a family to say it's just the A/B schedule. Had a parent reach out to me and say, what if we only want our child to come once a week? My question to that would be, what is the schedule that they have? Our teachers are prepared to have the conversations and support students with any hybrid that works in that flexibility for the parents, knowing that we also have coached the teachers to say, communicate with parents if there's a day that is critical instruction, a critical performance assessment, or a critical assessment that you'd like to see that student come into school. that you'd like to see that student come into school. Now, again, we know that if there are families that are wanting to minimize the contact with the classroom, that we also are talking at the three secondary schools about the options of having a testing center or another way of providing that so that a parent and a student could come in at a time that doesn't require as much contact with the number of students that we might be having. We have been having open office hours over the last couple of weeks to talk about the ways we can communicate and the ways we can encourage. I would also want the public, as well as our school board, to know that we are looking at this hybrid support for the majority of our classes, both core classes as well as elective classes. And I'm a little hesitant to say all of our classes because we do have some unique circumstances with classes such as home building that requires something different than just saying, come once a week, okay? I'm sorry, I was just kidding. Okay. So, the other part of that is I want to just reiterate that the due dates essentially should be matching what the other students are having. But we've also been talking as teachers about the fact that there may be that lag time if students are accessing direct instruction at 4:30, but then they're turning around and coming at the junior high level. They might be coming very next day to that. One more really important thing that I've been asked a lot is, is it possible for students to cherry pick at the seventh secondary level which classes they attend in a given day, or are they locked into a full day? Our high school administration has said, we can roll. We can support families with what they need. And if it's most critical that they didn't support in a calculus class, in a chemistry class, we do that already. We have late start, we have seminary, we have students who opt for work release. And they're very amenable to that idea that a student might be choosing to do the hybrid at home for three of their courses and coming in for just a chemistry class. The only thing that we really have to communicate at the high school level is that students are either at home or they're in the classroom. Because we know high school students, they'll want to be loose in the building and say, oh, I'm doing hybrid right now. So, that does require then, from a parent, the student's not driving, or the permission to have at least time, if you will, to be at home. And this is going to up our game of communication back and forth between parents and schools to say, today, we're exercising the hybrid option, or it's going to be a regular day for those students. The junior high schools, as you can imagine, seventh grade through ninth grade, we are going to need to think about that a little bit more and look at parents. But we still want to up with that same idea of flexibility if the parents are supportive of that. And I think that as we talk through the plan of online and hybrid for both elementary and for secondary, the biggest thing there that we want to stress is the idea of flexibility. But I also want to accent the point that we are providing the support of the teacher to match the needs of the students, not just about the rigidity of the schedule, but to say, we have five days a week in person, or we can do a hybrid that works any place in between them.
Okay. So, I hope that that was the biggest question that was out there in the community, asking about that whole hybrid piece. So, I do want to...
One more thing is that for on, for in-person and for hybrid, you register to be in-person. Okay?
Okay. So, on in-hybrid, you would only get the Tier One instruction. So, back to that really cool graphic I shaded out, you would miss that Tier Two and Three. You would get that when you're in-person, and we can try to catch up those gaps in intervention. That's why it's really critical, as consistent as families can be, that would be our preference because our teachers plan their interventions around who's going to be there so that they can do that targeted personalized instruction. So, that'd be something that we would encourage our families. The online learning option, so, we do have in the elementary, it was very different than the secondary. Because of the size of our district, we have one teacher per grade level at this point to offer the online instruction, one teacher per grade level across the district. Once we start getting the people signing into online, we may have to adjust those numbers and offer more. But again, we'll be uploading Tier One instruction and providing as much Tier Two as we possibly can. The one big question that happens and comes up in this is, what, where do my kids belong, right? Like, if my second grader goes to Longview, and the online teacher is a teacher from Horizon, I'm not saying that, but are they at Horizons or are they all in these two? The answer is very simple. They belong to their enrolled school. They belong to their homeschool. They will remain on that. They will be assigned a teacher as they normally do. So, principals are making those class lists like they normally do, whether they're doing hybrid, whether you're doing in-person, whether you're doing online. All communication that goes to homeschool families, the enrolled school families, go to the online students as well. And in addition, they'll be getting communication from their online teacher as well. So, they still belong to that enrolled school. They still are belonging to those same celebrations and recognitions, so they're still part of that community as much as possible. It's a little more flexible than hybrid. We do ask that our assignments, as Robin said, you know, you're doing assignments after 4:30, then the very next day you're coming in. We're setting assignments within that week. In online, it's a little bit different. They are going to, the promise is that at the end of the semester, the same standards that are taught in online are taught in-person. That's why we ask for a semester commitment. And so, our teachers know the essential standards. They know the pacing of those, and those are the ones that we are going to focus on. So, there are, those are those things. The teachers, instead of having office hours during the day as we did in the spring, they will be available in elementary after 2:45, so from 2:45 to 3:45, to offer feedback, to do office hours for those students that are online, okay? One big question that came out is a concern about recording and streaming, should we say, online courses. I did do some research into this and FERBUN, Education Rights and Privacy. It does not violate student privacy because that recording is secure, and it goes into the learning management system. The one thing that we do disclose is, here's the purpose behind the recording, and here is how long we're going to keep it. So, we'll keep it this year, and then that recording gets destroyed. But I think what's important for families to know and understand is that the recording, the purpose of the recording, this math thing is driving me backwards. The purpose of the recording is to record teacher instruction. So, if you will, if I'm this class, or if these guys are our class, and just like in YouTube, they are recording and seeing the instruction, not the audience. So, we have students protected back there. They will hear responses, but they won't see responses. The cameras that we got wide angle to about 150, 170 degrees, and they pick up my hat, but they don't swivel 360 to catch whoever's speaking, we find you, okay? So, I think that's important. I think that gives parents some relief to know that their kids are not broadcast, nor are they broadcast live on YouTube like we are right now. They would never be there. They would, they're being, they would be recorded and streamed into a private Canvas account, so that would be secure. So, I think that's important to know. Let Robin talk briefly about online.
Again, very similar to the elementary model with a couple of big distinctions. One is that at the two junior high schools, as we worked with many of our teachers and our administration, they felt like the training that they've had over the last six months and the expertise that they've developed with the Canvas LMS has enabled them to be able to do a parallel track of in-person, which remember that also are those families that are opting for a hybrid choice, but then also to sustain the online students as well, so that a student who's chosen online, their curriculum exactly mirrors what is happening in those classrooms. And part of the idea behind that is then, if a family chooses to have their students come back to in-person, that there is not the gap or the weirdness, if you will, that they might have encountered if they had two very different curriculums or learning that was happening. Now, as we explored this, one of the things that our two principals talked about is that depending on the number of families who register their students for the online option, they are predicting that we are between 5% and 10% of our families who choose that. That all of their teachers in the core areas came back and expressed that they were interested in keeping kids on their roles. So, we're not assigning ELA 7 to one teacher for two junior highs. Instead, we're assigning ELA 7 to that student based on their schedule that's already been built, and that will be the teacher that sustains that. What we've been working on, on the back end of that, is to make sure that ELA 7 at the two schools and across all of our ELA classrooms, or any of our classrooms, has consistent curriculum and consistent pacing. Not that we're asking our teachers to have every single minute be exactly the same, but they need to be traveling on the same freeway. If they move down, the pipe can be well. Now, our high school is a little bit different in that we have so many classes and options that essentially is that same big idea. But we also know, based on graduation credits and the needs of the student, that we may need to layer in another choice for families. And that includes the same concept of being enrolled in a teacher's online class. Again, I'm going to use ELA as an example. ELA 10 might be that choice. But they also may be looking at other curriculum that is not supported by our teachers at Murray High School, but instead, it's through BYU, through our Utah Students Connect options. They are some of the options that our students have been using traditionally over time that fulfill those course requirements. So, when we talk about our high school online version, that one is going to need to be, one is mapped out, parents, the student, and the counselor, to make sure that there may be many of those students. I also would highlight that there are some classes that are not going to lend itself well to an online environment, and we'll need to explore them. But as much as possible, we would like to keep the same schedule with similar teachers. That'll happen at the two junior high schools. It kind of depends on the high school, based on what the student is needing to take for graduation credits.
So, in summary, back to the really cool graphic. This is what you would get received in the online. You get great Tier One, you'll be able to get some Tier Two with some targeted intervention and some personalized and some teacher-like meetings in the online. All right. So, the whole point is flexibility. Murray Learning Options provide flexibility to families to stay on pace with classroom instruction and provide peace of mind for those who are wary and reticent to send their students to the school. So, how do I register for all these things, okay? All students, regardless of choice, need to register as normal. It's online, and it starts tomorrow. They go to murrayschools.org. There's quick links all over the place. If they want the Murray online-only option for the semester, they need to check their PE chart and communication from schools. There will be a separate form that they fill out indicating that they are going to be an online-only student. We are asking for the August fourth deadline so that we know if we have to add teachers, especially on the elementary side, because we don't want any of those class loads to get too high. If parents want to choose hybrid, there is a form to fill out. This is parents being able to exercise flexibility. They simply contact their administrator and declare what days they want to attend hybrid and what type of days they want to attend in person. We ask families to take that into consideration, discuss it, decide, and then contact their administrator by August 11th. That again, lets us know what days we're going to have who in our classes, so that teachers can start preparing what their weekly curriculum's going to look like and when they are providing those Tier Two and Tier Three interventions for their students. And again, our hope is that parents are consistent, and with this information, we hope that they understand those days, you know, two days in a row versus every other day. And again, we will roll with it, but those are the things that we want them to keep in mind. Any questions from the board or from land, whatever, that we can help clarify?
I have a question about how it works. Because in a lot of the emails that seem like people want an A/B schedule or a hybrid schedule with study in order they go be able to sit on the same class. Are professors going to be set up with knowing what they do a week? People are planning on coming in and orders are proper. They try to reduce the background.
Right. So, that's a great question. So, the answer is a little complicated in the elementary level. What teachers are going to do is they're going to have a seating assignment as if they had, and I'm going to just throw a number out there, 24 students, okay? And that seating assignment will be the same. If on any given day, we have minus eight, those will just be eight extra spaces. We can't necessarily take advantage of that space because we have to take care of contact tracing, right? And touch points and touch surface areas. So, that doesn't necessarily work to our advantage. What does work to our advantage is if we are able to declare those days, and those days are consistent. And families can commit to those in the hybrid option. But then, there's some families that are saying, no, 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 I just want to be able to offer and do whatever I want to do and need to do. And we're going to honor that. When we're able to declare and say and be consistent with that, and then one day, a family says, oh, I've got a problem. I'm going to leave my child at school on Tuesday, even though I declared that they're not going to come to school on Tuesday. Well, you can imagine what that does to our contact tracing efforts, right? So, it does help with overall numbers in the space, but it doesn't help with seating arrangements and things like that.
Maybe letters, you're like, oh, we love it. Can we help? Yeah. Which are you trying to point?
Yeah.
I think kids are going to be there five days a week that they're separating those in their same class.
Yeah.
That would be...
Yeah.
So, and I also think, one of the things I left you guys over last time is we're taking the clutter out of the mess.
Oh, yeah.
So, how we think of our elementary room, there's going to be more space.
Yeah. There is, and there's a negative to that as well because in elementary schools, you have, you only have that amount of space. Even when you take out all the clutter, you still have countertops, right? And then, most elementary classrooms have the rug because kids can't just sit at their desks for six hours. So, now, the question is, can we sit at a rug? Can we socially distance appropriately at the rug? How do we get movement in there? Because movement is one of the things that creates high risk. So, you know, we're having to think real differently because now we have the space to distance and apartment their desks, but now, how can kids still get that movement? And that kind of changes scenery to break up that six hours, so...
And I have a question. I've had several people ask, how about a sanitizing? How often will it be?
Great question, yeah. So, let me start with recess, and then I can also start with the classroom. And Superintendent can jump in here as well because she knows the protocols probably better than I do. At recess, the playground equipment will be sanitized at least once a day. But what we are doing is we are doing cohorts of students on the playground equipment at any given time. So, only certain groups of students are going to be able to play at the playground equipment at certain times. Handwashing before recess, handwashing after recess. Supervision required by teachers in order to keep that social distance, right? So, imagine six-year-olds crawling all over the monkey bars, and you know, they don't know what six feet is, and so that's a train wreck. So, we need to make sure that whenever they're on that playground equipment, there is proper supervision at that point. supervision at that point. They are going to be sanitized at least once a day. Playground equipment, the balls, the jump ropes, all of that stuff, there's, schools are developing protocols to put those balls on a rack or in a bucket or in a bin or whatever it might be. And then every school is going to get a mixer with the sanitizing bullets to be able to spray down those, that equipment and have that sit for the necessary, 15, 20 minutes, whatever that might be. Yes, ma'am?
Five minutes.
Oh, yes, it's a sit for five minutes. So there's that. In addition, we do have, we have tons of, we are able to procure supplies, we're able to procure all of those mixers. Classrooms will be sanitized once a day, whether that's at the end of the day or the beginning of the day, we'll start the day off with sanitizing. And then we also have wipes that we're going to be able to, alcohol-based wipes, we'll be able to wipe down, just as a normal daily practice. Chrome looks, our desks, our touch points, our surface areas. So one thing that the board may not know is that, and Darren's going to talk about this, is teachers have to engage in training. And there's a webinar from the Levitt Partners Healthcare Group that actually walks teachers and whoever's on the webinar through, think through that distancing piece, think through those touch points, how can you minimize that touch? And those are things that we're going to have our teachers think through and walk through as well. Thank you.
I have a question. So first of all, I think you guys have put in a non, not a, thank you for what you're doing, because I think, from what I can see, I think we're hitting as many of the key odds as we can possibly anticipate. So one of my first questions, though, it seems like we are, because of the cleaning restrictions, the, such as on recess and being monitored more in the lunchroom, et cetera, downloading, we're adding teachers to do, get those worksheets or whatever assignments or tasks online, we're adding a lot more workload to our team members. Are we confident that we have enough resources and human capital to do that right now? Or do we feel like we need to consider additional support? Whether that's in IT to help with the IT side of things, whether it's just other teachers to help with the Tier Two level online, because the regular teachers don't have the time to do that?
Or even janitorial?
Right. I just, I worry that we're spreading ourselves too thin if we're retaining the same resources that we currently have with what we do. I just, I don't want that to become overburdened too.
Absolutely, and it's something that we have laid away tonight worrying about with our teachers, for sure. This is a phenomenally huge lift. We're providing as much resources, not necessarily human, but physical resources that we can to make the job easier in order to meet the needed demand from the community, to provide a hybrid option, to provide the sanitation. Is it going to be easy? It's not. Do we need more at all? If you have a magic bullet and a wallet that will provide that, we would absolutely love that for the Tier Two help or even for our logo. In terms of IT, we've got that part covered, but it's in the human capital, and where we're going to find the most need is in substitutes, because our teachers, you know, they're going to be sick, and then how do we manage that? We don't have an answer, and I'm confident and feel good about the fact that most districts don't have an answer to that. Superintendent?
Thank you, I'd like to just address that. Thank you, Board Member Cooper. At this time, you know, without really knowing how things are going to roll out, it is difficult to act safe. We need certain things in certain areas, but that is something we will continue to monitor and watch. And should we feel like there is an area, we will come across with the board and ask for that consideration for additional personnel as needed. A big area is our janitorial staff, and we are watching them very closely. Director Roberts, who is unable to be here this evening, has been meeting with custodians, looking at ways that we can streamline things, looking at ways that we can do things differently. So that is a very fair question and something we definitely will keep in consideration. Right now, I think until we really start seeing who's going to choose which of the options, it's a hard question to answer right now, but we appreciate having that door open for us. And we will keep in communication with the board on that most certainly.
I thought for sure you were going to offer the Jared Cooper's fellowship.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Missy thinks, I think the, one of the biggest questions definitely is the hybrid option that we get from people. And we're not doing the same kind of hybrid option as maybe some of the corresponding districts in the valley are doing. So I think that lends to a little bit of the confusion. I personally like our hybrid option better because of the flexibility it offers. One of the big concerns is that it will not cut class sizes right in half, like some of the others will.
Right.
Some of, I think you have an A/B or whatever schedule, you are going to cut your classrooms in half, and you have a fixed schedule. But hopefully, when, if we can be smart about it and maybe alter the flexibility from some of our parents, saying, instead of Monday, Tuesday, with Thursday, but I can work for you. And then we can kind of manipulate that, that class size a little bit.
Agreed, and I think Superintendent's going to talk about metrics a little bit later, and she can address that.
But I appreciate the FAQs on, and I think you cleared that for me, but I was thinking about your schedule. That is one thing that parents are going to need to be aware of, is that you're not going to get your kid up and go, school starts at eight o'clock. It's going to start later. We're going to ask for some flexibility from the parents as well. So maybe if we put that on the website, but maybe if you put, like, Monday, assignments uploaded 4:30 due Tuesday, that could help some of our parents that are making this incredibly hard decision for themselves.
You got it? I totally do that. We'll put it in the reopening plan.
One of the, and this might be for a later, later question, but, well, I'll save my other two questions for kind of at the end.
Miss Ian Hagan, can you explain also how the hybrid, because we want students who are ill to stay home, that's a good question. How that works if a student wakes up and is ill, what we want them to do with the hybrid?
Absolutely. If you're ill, stay home and then engage, if you feel well enough at 4:30 and beyond, please engage in your learning so that you can keep pace. If you are too ill, then you have the week until the Sunday night to turn in those assignments and to catch up with your instruction. Think of it like when you were absent before, then you'd ask your little brother to pick up your packet of work from the teacher. Now you don't have to have your little brother pick up your packet of work. Everybody will have access to that assignment online. One thing that can happen too, and this is in the FAQ, but it wasn't highlighted very well, and I didn't highlight it in this, is during the day on those days, kids can be engaged in Lexia, they can do Typing Agent, they can be doing CERN. So the day isn't lost per se, there are some things that they can be doing, and teachers may be able to say, here are the discussion questions that we're going to ask today, you can be participating in that. So as we get better, I think you'll see an even better integration of those apps and resources, even in the hybrid option. But yeah, if you're sick, stay home. At 4:30, you'll be able to access those things. If you feel well enough, please engage in Typing Agent, in Lexia, and CERN. Those are all fantastic reinforcements and provide that extra Tier Two instruction that we were talking about.
So two questions. How can the line be what they have here? Two questions to do with what you did. So this might be a little intrusive, but if you wake up and help while your child is still in the picture and call the office?
Yes.
Call the office.
Call the office, yeah, call the office and then go into your online learning.
And then, we were about not coming in at noon if you're absent, if you're spending the day or?
Yeah, so one of the things that the Levitt Partners suggests, that's a great question, thanks, Board Member Johnson, or Board Member Lynn. One of the things that Levitt Partners talked about is movement, right, and then foot traffic. And so one of the things that we want to do to limit foot traffic, it's not that we're barring hard doors and shutting everybody out, that's certainly not the persona that we want to get, but we also, we have an obligation to keep our students safe and to minimize exposure. So all of our schools are going to be equipped with a doorbell buzzer, camera ring, and then cameras, so that we can kind of communicate. And so with that being said, it's not ideal in the elementary structure to say, I'm going to come in the morning and then go home in the afternoon and do online learning after 4:30. There's a couple of things. Number one, just that whole idea of there's more traffic coming in and out of the building now, and there's more movement. And then number two, teachers are going to be uploading those direct instructions to the learning management system. And so a kid might get really lost navigating in their learning management system, saying, oh, well, I did my language arts assignment, but I didn't do my math assignment, now I've got all of this stuff posted, do I have to do it twice? You know, there's going to be a lot of confusion. It's not that same confusion on the secondary side, because they have eight different campus accounts, we have one Google classroom stream, so it is a little bit trickier.
Okay, so we're encouraged to stay home?
Yeah, yeah, so if you have a midday appointment or the dawn appointment, do online learning that day. And I get it, like, I have two kids in races and stuff, you can only take them appointments when you can take them, right?
And you know, the other thing is, we've all had kids not COVID that still have crap in the morning, or have some crap in the morning, and by noon is feeling better.
Yeah. We want them to stay home. We want to, we want to be overly cautious, which is funny, because that's exactly the opposite of what we used to tell them, but now with the health changes, we want to make sure that they just stay home. And the great thing is, is that we have a way to keep them in and on time with our curriculum, which is, which is a fantastic win.
Question. With regard to downloading the videos at the end of the day, I'm just thinking about if a parent comes home, their kid maybe has difficulty with math, is there a timestamp on those videos so they'll know, I want to go and invest your time on that download? Will they be broken out in certain chunks so that they can get to that particular portion of the video?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so what I envision, and this would take some training, so you're not going to, like, turn the video camera on and just screen, like, all six hours of your day. You would just be streaming as a teacher, I'm going to start my English language arts lesson, I'm going to hit record, and then that's my 15-minute English language arts lesson, and that's one download. Then I'm going to start my math lesson, and that's another download. And then when I upload it to my LMS, I'm going to label it, language arts lesson video, math lesson video. So I thought you were going to say to, inside of that video.
That's what I was thinking, I was just worried that it would be longer than that.
No, 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 they're just going to, they'll be able to splice that together, because they're going to be recording separate lessons. Thank you, guys, so much. Thank you, guys, for your hard work. Isn't the line supposed to be kind of slower, huh? So I wanted to make sure we say a huge thank you to our, I know there's a lot of questions surrounding hybrid, but thank you to our teaching and learning team, Assistant Superintendent Bushell, Director Hamilton, Director Williams, and Director Kercher, who have worked very, very hard to put together plans that again will give families options, but also try to minimize, there will be some additional workload for teachers, yes, but working on ways to mitigate that as well with teachers. And two things I do want to just reiterate really quickly for both the board, as you may get questions, as well as for those who are viewing this on our live stream, every student needs to register. Every student, our registration opens tomorrow. Every student will do that registration process. We will then have a form that will be available beginning tomorrow for those who would like the online-only option. They will need to fill out a form declaring that they understand they are doing the online-only option and they are committing to a minimum of one semester with that. So again, everybody needs to register.
Jim, for anybody that's wondering, maybe back to the questions, the options aren't so good.
Yeah, they're very good.
It makes it kind of weird, but it clarified a lot of the questions I think we've been asked.
Yes.
Go to there.
So that's great. For those who are watching online, our plan is updated as soon, and when we make updates to it and after it is approved, it's approved tonight, it will be the approved plan on there. If you go to our website, murrayschools.org, there is a link on the main bar that says, Murray returns with care. You can access our plan, and there are FAQ documents for both elementary and secondary that describe all of the questions that we have received, which we appreciate, and hopefully we have clarified those in the FAQ document. Okay, next, I would like to invite Darren Dean, and he will be talking about the support. There's a lot of things that are going to be different in the classroom, you have to think of things differently. And so the support that we are going to provide for teachers, as well as parent responsibility in daily checking and symptom checking. So, Mr. Dean.
All right, plug in the computer. All right, I'm going to start off with the symptom checking for parents. As you realize, there's.
I don't know. I do the whole, I don't know.
This is magnetic personnel, just talk.
Okay, talk really loud.
Darren, what paper?
Oh, so this is page 22. Yes, and so that's where the symptom checking plan is for the families. And we need their partnership, there's no way we can symptom check every single student every single day. So we do have, this kind of outlines it, and there's some links in there, and I'm just going to go through one of the protocol for the parents. It's kind of outlined both here and this part, and then if you click on the link, if you want to, there's the protocol. And so the protocol, we're going with the characteristics that are recognized. Parents are supposed to do the temperature check at home. They're supposed to look for cough, shortness of breath, chills, loss of legs, sore throat, loss, loss of sense of smell, loss of sense of taste. If they don't have a thermometer, they can request one by contacting the school. We've made a purchase, so we have some that we will have available. Parents do need them, they can request a school, our school will have those ready to go. And then some of the other stuff out there, some toppings, some information, and proper hand washing, and covering, and all of that. In our registration, there is an affirmation statement that parents have to indicate a sign that says, I will not send my student to school symptomatic or if they've been in contact with anyone with COVID-19, I believe, in the last 10 days. So that affirmation statement is included. So we're going to put it on them. If students, and it's age-appropriate, our older students can do a symptom check themselves. If, for some reason, there's a student that's too young to symptom check themselves, they can arrange for the administrator at the school, if there's some reason they're not able to get that done that day. So I think we've got that covered, and it's just going to take a unique partnership, and it's going to take our teachers, too. The teachers and staff took a lot of monitoring to make sure we don't have sick kids at the school. Well, if there are any questions on that, that's fairly straightforward. The next part is, the first part of the reopening plan, and I think it's on page, who might be on page two, I just scroll up to it. One of the pages is here. Page five. Page five. Not page five. We are required to do training for all of our teachers and all of our staff, and what we've set up is we've set up campus modules for all of our teachers and staff. So as you remember, the board is looking at August 7th, we made the calendar adjustment to trade out two professional development days in September and October, and put that on August 7th. So they will have a fairly robust training that's going to take them through COVID-19, a lot of modules, on what they're going to need to learn, get some background information. I know a lot of them probably already have a lot of background information. Most of this information comes directly from the Centers for Disease Prevention, Disease Control and Prevention. It talks about that as a spread, what is it? Protocol specifically that our teachers are going to be required to teach, they're going to be required to teach washing hands, all grade levels, face covers, social distancing, covered coughs and sneezes, not touching eyes, nose, and mouth. So they have specific protocols and specific things that they need to go through, even to the point of showing videos, having all of those discussions. The next module, we include the symptoms, and this is not only for the informing them about what parents are going to do, but it's informing them, the employees, when they come in every day, they have to have their temperature checked by a designated office personnel, and they have to verify that they are symptom-free, and they have not been in contact with anyone who's been exposed to COVID-19 in the last 10 days. They have an affirmation that they will sign as part of this training that they're not going to have the school sick. We have health office referral protocol, and that protocol that is in this training, it just reiterates from the School Nurses Association, and it reiterates that we want our teachers to take care of the minor things. We don't want a lot of kids coming down in traffic, getting into our offices, into the office area. And so there's a protocol there of how to report absences, COVID-19 absences, our lead policy, we have information for our high-risk individuals, how they our lead policy, we have information for our high-risk individuals, how they can, what they need to help, they need accommodation. And then it's some information on coping with stress, because it's a stressful time. And then getting into more of the classroom environment. We talked about the classroom environment, and this is where the Level Partners webinar was brought up. And that webinar is an hour plus, somewhere between an hour, an hour and a half. And that's talking about all of the movement in the classroom, how they're going to arrange things and so forth. And then they have some work that they need to do there. They have a situational characteristics assessment tool that they need to work on. They will fill out for their class how movement goes, how duration goes, proximity, group size, respiratory output, touch, congestion. They're going to go through all the things, and they will submit that to their administrator. So we have that. And then the training will continue on, and they fill out that plan. Then our, currently how many pages, 44? Our reopening plan. They are going to go through the reopening plan. All teachers and staff are going to be required to read it and state that they have done so. And we've got that link to our website, we're the most current one that we uploaded, so they can have all of that information. And then we're going to have them do some stuff with our parent square communication. So we tried to hit all aspects that definitely that the states require and that our plan has required. And this training, we're hoping to push it out live by tomorrow morning, otherwise it's midnight before we can study. So the teachers and staff have an opportunity to work on it prior to coming back.
Oh, I do have a question here. So you mentioned teachers of hybrid, can we have teachers that are just, I just cannot do this? And I know that they don't follow through the ADA. Is there any option for those teachers at all? I know that's a difficult question.
Yeah, depending on the situation. So if there is an option for a teacher that has a child and wants to do childcare, they can request leave of absence from the board. All teachers have family medical leave that they get applied for, 12 weeks of unpaid leave. That would probably be the first option they'd look at. Beyond that, I'm not sure in policy that we do have an option, if you really have a separation room for them for a certain time, that would be your...
Yeah, I just, I've been asked that question, and I don't appreciate that.
And we would just ask that anyone in that situation needs to contact Community Resources. All of that is going through there, and you can, Mr. Bean, explain what is available.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just have to kind of look at each individual and their unique situation and circumstances.
And that's what I wanted to add, Murray, and that we do have the opportunity to work with each other.
Yeah.
And help them out in any way.
And we've already started dialoguing with a number of our employees. I know all the directors have, and I have too. We've received requests for how can you keep them safe on high risk? And so we'll be sending out a letter also to any of those who identify as high risk. Those are the underlying conditions that we're unaware of. This training explicitly states in our reopening plan that they need to let us out. So we can take care of them and help them out.
All right, thank you, Darren, to the Human Resources Department.
Okay. I will wrap up kind of this part of the meeting with the last two things. The first thing I want to discuss is there have been many questions as to what will happen if we have a positive, and not if, we know we will have positive cases. It's the reality of what we will be dealing with. But when a positive case is identified in our schools, what is the protocol that we will follow? Okay. This will be on page 26, 26. So I want to preface this by saying we do have a direct contact at the Salt Lake County, or the Salt, the Salt Lake Health Department, Salt Lake County Health Department, that we work directly with. I also want to say that currently the Salt Lake County Health Department, I was in contact with them yesterday, they are working on flow charts and infographics to give to all schools regarding this very question. However, they do not anticipate having those available until August. So with that, after a discussion with Gary Edwards, who is the head of the Salt Lake County Department of Health, here is the procedure as we understand it. If the health department identifies a positive case, so this is, the health department is notified of that, the health department will issue an isolation order for individuals tested positive and quarantine notices for student or staff members of the same household. The health department will do that. The health department will then notify the point of contact at the school or schools where the student or staff attends. In our documentation, we do have a point of contact for each school. The health department has that information. They know if there is a positive test and it is tied to one of our schools, they will contact that school contact. In most cases, in all cases, but one is the school principal, in one school it's the assistant principal. When the school receives that call from the health department, we will make sure we increase our precautions such as, if we need to do additional cleaning in a room or space where that person was, we will do that. The school will be required to provide a list of high-risk individuals who have been in contact, and contact is closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes, with the person who tested positive. Those names will need to go to the Salt Lake County Health Department, who will do the contact tracing of high-risk individuals. So with that, it is very important when our parents or our families do registration, if there are healthcare needs or healthcare issues that we are not aware of, that is something that you can put when you register. We do need to have those complete, so that we will be looking at our ASPIRE system to see who are those high-risk individuals. We will also have a list of our high-risk individuals by school as far as our staff. So the school will provide a list of those high-risk individuals to the Salt Lake County Health Department, they will conduct that contact tracing. Then the school will be responsible to notify others, those who are not identified as high-risk, about a potential exposure at school, including self-monitoring and when to get tested. And we do have that letter in our plan, so that you can look over that. If someone tests positive, it does not necessarily mean that an entire class, school, or even the entire district will be shut down. This is something that the Salt Lake County Health Department will work with us on to make those decisions. So a lot of people want very, you know, in this situation, what's going to happen? What is going to happen is we will work hand-in-hand with the Salt Lake County Health Department to make the best decisions. And then, but again, there might be some additional investigating needed. Now, if someone comes to our school and discloses that they have a positive case of COVID and they have not notified the health department. Now, in all cases, if they've done testing, it should be in the county health department. But in the event that it does not, if someone comes and says, for example, we have, there may be a case where we have an employee that does not live in Salt Lake County batteries, that perhaps gets tested in another county, let's say they live in Utah County, and they come to us and let us know, "I have tested positive for COVID", they would then notify, we would, they would notify Darren Dean here at the district office, who would then contact the Salt Lake County Health Department, and the same procedures would happen. So we want to make sure we have a really good communication loop. That's, you know, like we said, in almost all cases, our students live in Salt Lake County. So with students, if we have students or families. However, if we have employees that live outside of Salt Lake County who may test positive, get that for me different, county health department, not the Salt Lake County. We have closed that loop by making sure they notify Darren Dean, who will then notify our contacts at the Salt Lake County Health Department. Questions on that?
Do you have any kind of idea of how quickly this is going to happen? So I've had a pause there today, when, when is, when can I notify?
So ideally, we hope it's immediately, but that's going to be contingent on the health department, if the health, whatever health department. They have, you know, they are very aware that, at least our local health department, so our local health department covers by school districts. They have assigned a specific person to each school district to help with that. So I can't, you know, I can't answer unquickly when, and they would let us know if it's within an hour, two hours. I don't have that information, but I'd be happy to see if I can talk to them and find that out.
No, not this minute, or anything, but under page 24. That's the top of each board, that the student that's called in a state pool and isolated for three days for job management, and it's been at least two days, I think I asked this last time, but at another spot, page 27, and it's four days.
So that is going to depend on what the county health department says, so we will get that fixed. And so, yes, there may be, it's been a little fluid in there. So it is essentially two weeks, which are 14 days, but you know, 14 calendar days, but it's really 10 school days, does that make sense? Can you guys make that clear? So we'll get that fixed, yes. Thank you for noticing that, and we will clear that in our final draft, thank you.
One of the things that parents are going to want to know, and it's who tested positive and are not able to give that out, that, you know, that's again...
That, yes, and so we will not, the only individuals who will know will be likely Mr. Bean, and then the principal, and then most likely myself. But we will, we cannot give out the name of who tested positive, that is a violation of the earned balance by that.
I just wondered if you should put that in here?
I think there was something, um... There's, I know there's something, but I can, I can put that in there, but we will not be...
The new...
Oh, here it is, right here, so on page, but we can strengthen that absolutely. Page 27, in the section, "Communicate health and safety issues transparently while protecting the privacy of students and families". It does say, "Only essential person know", which are school administrators, school nurse, human resources. "Will be routinely notified of any possible cases of unidentified name information, name, grade, school, class, will only be shared as needed for contact tracing and prevention purposes." I can absolutely add to that, if you think that would strengthen that. We won't be sharing that with, in our, in our communication out to families.
Yeah, something that just that we will not share. And then we're going to go to our symptom checklist as short as possible.
Yes, so we will, we will add that in, and we will also clarify the numbers of days for the, of each 24. Other questions regarding how that will look?
I think it is difficult to get teachers and parents to want to know the exact steps, and the exact steps, if not, that's horrible.
It is, it's very hard. We live, you know, we live in a world where we want to know, if this happens, then this is going to happen. If this happens, this is going to happen. And it will be fluid, and it will, that is, that is hard because we want those answers. But again, we will work hand-in-hand with our Salt Lake County Health Department, and we trust our health department as the health experts to help us make good decisions on that. Any other questions on that? Okay, see none. Finally, the last one is we've had some questions, and there were some questions and a couple of comments even this evening. "What will trigger a school closure?", or "What will trigger a change in school schedule?". And so I wanted to discuss what the metrics are that we will be looking at. These have been vetted through the Utah State Board of Education, and these are the decision-making process. So I just kind of want to walk you through this, and I also want to give you some stats as far as where we are as a city and a county. You do it, it should be, no, I did not print that out. I apologize, I didn't get it copied to you, I'm very sorry, I did not print this out. So it does say, "It's anticipated that this decision to move from one school scenario to another during the 2020, 2021 school year will be made by Murray City School District in consultation with the Salt Lake County Health Department based on a myriad of factors." We will be looking at Murray City and/or Salt Lake County metrics. Those metrics will include the local color-coded restriction phase, which is the governor's color-coded restriction phase, the number of confirmed cases, the percentage of positive tests relative to the total number of tests, the number of daily hospitalizations, the number of emergency department visits for COVID-related illnesses, the overall state capacity for testing, contact tracing, and supply of personal protective equipment, and the capacity for hospital beds and ICU beds. All of that information is available, and we do get that, it's available on the Salt Lake County Health Department website. It's available at murraycity.gov. I do want to say, we have been tracking the data, the metric data for Murray City and for Salt Lake County. And I thought this might just be a good, good information. Again, this is pulled directly from the Salt Lake County Health Department website. These are the seven-day rolling averages for the last four weeks. The week of June 21st through June 27th, there was a seven-day rolling average of 517 positive cases in Utah. 252 of those were in Salt Lake County, six were in Murray City. June 28th through July 4th, the seven-day rolling average in Utah was 563. Salt Lake County was 236, Murray City eight. July 5th through 11th, Utah's seven-day rolling average is 659. Salt Lake County, 256, Murray City nine. And finally, the last full week that they have before July 12th through July 18th, the rolling, seven-day rolling average for Utah was 638. Salt Lake County was 266, Murray City was six. So Murray City, when we look at the overall number of positive COVID cases in the state, Murray City is hovering right about 1%. 1% of individuals in Murray City are testing positive. So that's some metric data. There was also recently a graph that was published that in Salt Lake County, this was published by the health department, they are seeing the trend go down because of the mask mandate in Salt Lake County, which is very positive for us as a county. So we are watching those metrics. And like I said in our last board meeting, beginning next week, I will provide this information on the week that we exist before, or at any time, if somebody wants to call me, I will be happy to do that, we're keeping track of that. So those are the stats, the metrics we're going to look at for the city and the county. As far as the district, we're going to be tracking the number of students and staff that are infected, the number of students and staff that are in quarantine, the number of students choosing not to attend in person, the availability of substitutes to cover classes as needed, the demographics, the appearance of students, families, and staff to our prevention guidelines, the number of staff who have access to childcare, the number of students without parents and guardians home with a dirty normal school hours, the number of students and staff who have access to Wi-Fi and internet, and the number of students who have access to food at home. Those are all very important metrics for us to look at as well in making a decision if we need to change to a different schedule. And what those schedules might be, we are currently in scenario one, which is our in-person learning with the hybrid option, as well as an online... which is our in-person learning with the hybrid option as well as an online-only option. Should the health department and/or the school board deem that we need to do a reduction in the number of students in our building, we could implement that schedule or we could go to a fully remote schedule based on looking at those metrics. So it's not as simple as saying if four people get COVID, we're shutting everything down. We have to look, it's a very complex, but a very important set of metrics that we need to look at to ensure that we are providing, one, the healthiest environment for our students and staff, and two, equity to learning options for all of our families and students. So that matters, that is in the document again. I apologize that you don't have a hard copy of that. Questions on that?
Who do you have, did you put Denise's line?
Uh, Denise's, but I've actually been, she's doing it, but I'm also, she's in Murray City, but I track every day, the positives in the county and in the city as compared to state. So, because I think that's good data. I think it's very important, you know, we've been asked to look at data and look at trends. That's an important metric for us to look at. Okay, any questions on that?
Do you want to think of another job? Because I think that's a good idea.
So those are the areas that we felt in the plan that have had some significant upgrades or changes to that we really felt like we needed to address with the board. Um, at this time, we, and by we, I mean any of us that are here in the room, are happy to address any other parts of the plan you would like to discuss or if there needs to be discussion among the board. And then, um, at the conclusion of that, we would ask for a vote by the Board of Education on our Murray reopening plan to be considered.
Um, I question that, I'm sorry, I question that the, uh, lot, what you're claiming could be your first raise without some of the health department or anything.
Cleaning procedures are in our plan and you can see those. Um, we have ordered, I do want to say that we have ordered 350 sprayers, misters, so every classroom will get to have one of those. We have ordered BPA as well as food-grade safe cleaner that will kill the COVID virus in five minutes. And what that means is we wanted to ensure that it is something that is safe around our students. So it is, it is a food-grade cleaner, which is used in kitchens and so it is safe for us with it.
But, but when I'm talking to the captain, who we would rather a parent than, if parents really want to help, cleaners not being the best, I saw the team up to the back there, we're already quite nice about. Fine, we, we have enough to do with cleaner.
We, yes.
We want to then, full supply, then, if you, I mean, like, because it will be all we can.
Yeah. You know, let, let us talk with that and kind of see what would be best. That's great. We very much appreciate our parents who are still going. That matters, heartwarming to us. We are very carefully considering the cleaners that we are using. One, to make sure that they kill the COVID virus, but two, to make sure they are safe for our children and our staff. Um, and so that's a very delicate balance. And Director Roberts has been looking at all of the, the sheets on that, all the material sheets to make sure we meet both of those criteria. So in answer to your question, if parents want to bring something, give us, give us a bit of time and we can put some of these together that will help with that, so.
I think that's a very good point because I think like at the beginning of the year, every, and just briefly, wish list. And so the teachers will still have their wish list, but maybe we can, um, direct that to other teams.
Absolutely.
And then another question and another kind of hot topic right now in the media is the HVAC system.
Yes, yes, we have looked at our HVAC systems. We have, uh, we do have that in here. So our HVAC systems, we have upgraded to two-inclined filters, which are three levels above what's required. And our filters are changed from a quarterly basis. They are dated so that we can ensure that all our swampers are being sanitized prior to the start of school. Our HVAC fans will not be turned off at the end of the day. They will run through the evening to increase airflow. And in buildings that are open, staff will be allowed to open those. In addition, we are having our classroom doors, they will be open fifteen minutes before school starts and will stay open through the entire day. Um, we did submit that waiver to the Utah State Fire Marshal today to get the waiver because the fire, fire code requires we keep the door shut when students are in there. It's a safety mechanism, but we can ask her, I will be able to that. So again, we work with our Murray Fire Department as well.
Jen, I would like to maybe have you send to every parent in Murray District some of this data and exactly what's going on because I don't think we have a hundred percent of the parents listening to what they've said tonight. But if they knew what you just said about the cleaning and sanitizing, I think that would help him.
I think it's all in this plan, but the parents, if they keep, if they're not.
It's, it's a very large plan. We understand that. We do have prepared to go out this evening, that need approval of this plan. Um, Doug Perry, our public, our partner of public communications, has prepared an FAQ document with some of those as well. Thank you. So yes, because we know forty-four pages is very daunting. You may notice at the end of our plan, we have actually addressed the seven factors that, that, and how we are going to, to help mitigate those factors. I apologize, it's really very, wait, wait.
We have an infographic to teach at a office, so we don't have time out to start the cover.
When I think the same two children is the number one thing parents want to know. And so I think that would be critical because it took me quite a lot of time to read all of this.
It's an extensive plan. It is one that we have put a lot of thought into. There's multiple steps. So yes, thank you. We will absolutely get away that we can communicate that. Thank you. Other questions, concerns?
Um, a lot of concerns, but not because of the plan. I mean, um, we have people from all sides asking this. Is it the right thing to send kids back to school? It's a, a difficult question to answer. I love that our plan allows for parents to take that personal choice and make that decision for themselves. This is going to be a very different environment for our kids and, um, that, that's where it comes to me.
Providing, we go monthly seminars to help because we know this is a distressful time. Um, I really wish we could provide like a massage therapist to every teacher, but that does not meet the physical, the physical guidelines. But I really thought if we could, because I understand, we understand the enormity of all of this and the uncertainty and how, how the emotional toll that takes. And so what I would ask, I would say, we as a district are committed to doing all we can to support our teachers, our principals, our employees, as well as our students. But it is certainly going to take all of us working together and realizing it is different. It is going to be a different year and we are going to need to be kind to one another and empathetic towards one another and really be there for each other to, to support one another. It, it is going to be a different year. Thank you for recognizing that and we recognize that too. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wrote that. Um, I do want to, in light of the, the heavy technology load, I want to recognize Jason Air for a number of reasons. Uh, number one, he was able to procure all of the cameras that we're going to be able to provide to our teachers. Um, I, yesterday morning, when I got to work, we had 240 teachers that had already asked to get the cameras. Um, they recognized the need, they see the advantages. So we had to hurry up and find some more. They're flying off the shelves right now. Um, and he's coming up with ways to increase speeds, download time so that we can make sure that those, the teachers are not losing any time and waiting for video to download, right? So, so he's really been thoughtful through them. As well as, um, we have Chromebooks for every single student, right? Third through twelve, they're going to take at home. We have to be able to offer Chromebook insurance. And then K through two, we're able to procure all of the Chromebooks so that they can keep one at home and keep one at school so that we don't have to worry about moving that back and forth. So I just, I, I appreciate Jason, I appreciate his foresight. But then also, he's such a visionary in that he is, he's on the cutting edge of procuring 5G in our district. Um, he's been working with you again. And, and this is not just something that's cutting edge in the state. It's not just something that's cutting edge in the, the nation. But, but 5G is something that he's getting calls from all over the world on how he's going to, to do this and how he's developing this. Um, Jason is an incredible hire, an incredible addition to our staff. And it is because of his foresight and his ingenuity that, that we're able to do the things we're able to do and do it so well in Murray City School District. So huge shout out to Jason as well. And, and I also want to, um, we had talked in our secondary about, um, being able to offer most classrooms. We talked about construction and automotive, not being able to do that. Um, shout out to Scott because he also started thinking outside of the box with Jason and said, what about switching, what about switching those cameras up instead of having cameras that are showing spot on? But if we have vertical cameras that are more higher resolution that can zoom in on an engine compartment, right? And start to be able to stream those kinds of things. So, so lots of people working together, thinking outside of the box to make this learning happen for kids and not just for it to, to be, let's get it done, but let's make it real relevant and, and, and of high quality. So I just wanted to, to give both of those to, uh, an author.
Thank you. So again, any further questions or discussion?
All right, I'll, uh, keep a motion to approve the return of care plan for Murray City School District.
I move that we approve the return of care plan for Murray City School District.
And a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Any other discussion? And all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And any opposed? All right.
Thank you. And we just want to reiterate how much we appreciate the support and faith and confidence that the board has and we're, all of us doing what we can to support our students and teachers. We are very grateful for that. We know that there will continue to be things that we need to discuss. We're committed to discussing those. We will discuss those. Um, at this point, with the plan approved, I will get the documentation ready that needs to go to the State Board of Education. Those plans are very similar to what you have here. Although ours is forty-four pages and theirs is twelve. But I will make sure all of that information is prepared and up to the State Board by next week for, so that they have that as well. So thank you.
I did have one other thing, um, this is a fluid plan continually changing. And I know you guys are already thinking about it, but should things go not the way you want it to? We may make some adjustments to the plan moving forward. And also if the state goes to a different color?
Yes.
If we can kind of have the, so the board do not get caught?
Yes, we, we, yes, we are, we have had those discussions and we are prepared, as our state superintendent has said, to be nimble and flexible given whatever circumstance we have. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, we're adjourned.